First town hall meeting for the school year 2012-2013. Can't believe it's already September and almost October. And I first want to thank Community Banks of Colorado. Prior, they were make-of-choice, and they are community supporters for tonight's evening's meeting. So we want to thank them very much. And just to give you just a little bit of an idea, most of you have been here before, but Conifer Area Council is a non-political organization. We do not support or oppose any development, any issue, political agenda, individual person or business. We do ask that all of our speakers abide by those guidelines also, and we also ask that our audience members do that also. So no campaigning, no politicking tonight. You've probably heard enough on the TV already, so you don't need to hear that tonight. So again, if you've been here before, and I'm sure most of you have, we will have presentations without interruption, without any questions or comments, from about seven to eight. And we will, we are full, so it can be a full hour. And then about eight o'clock, we'll have an open house format, and that goes to about eight forty-five, so that you can go and talk to all of the presenters, you can see their displays, pick up information from them, ask questions, make comments, whatever you would like to do at that point. So without further ado, I would like to introduce, and you all know him, Steve Harrelson, our resident engineer for CDOT with a CDOT update. Steve?
Thank you. I don't have a whole lot of construction ahead of me, too. We've got three little projects that are going this fall. We're going to install some cable rail and median from mile marker two forty-six to two thirty-five, which is pretty much everywhere that there's a grass median. It's a, I'm sure you've seen the cable rail around. There's some right on the windy point on the edge. It's like steel cable that doesn't cause the snow to drift, but it keeps cars from crossing the median and having head-ons. So that's starting, I believe, next week, but it should have very minor impacts to traffic. Then here in about a month, we just advertised two little projects. One is a groundwater drain at a, there's a little groundwater seep right above Windy Point, and we're going to put in a, we're going to tear up about sixty feet of the Denver-bound side and put in an under-drain to try to de-water that. Last spring, I don't know if any of you noticed, there was water bubbling up between the cracks and the concrete paving, and it would freeze at night and make a little ice slick, so it's obviously a very dangerous situation. So we're going to try to address that. We will, it will be down to one lane for about twenty hours. We're going to shut it down to one lane at ten AM on whatever day we pick. And after the northbound rush hour, they're going to tear up the two lanes in the shoulder, install the drain, and then use some high-early concrete to repave it overnight, so then by rush hour the next morning, it should be back to two lanes. And then the next night, we'll do the other, the other half of the road, or probably a couple nights later. So look for that in late October, early November. We'll have some signs out, but we're hoping not to impact the rush hour at all. It'll just be between ten AM and five AM the next day. We hope to get that work done, at least with two lanes shut down. The other little project we've got for this fall is some culvert relining on Highway seventy-four. I don't know if that impacts many of you, but it's, it shouldn't have any impact to traffic. The only other big projects we have planned are in South Park. We're going to put in some passageways and an overlay through South Park next summer. That project was originally supposed to go this summer. We had some environmental issues that delayed it, but it is, we are planning to construct that starting in April this year. And Pine Junction, we're designing, but we don't have any construction money, so we don't have a definite date when that will go. I hope it's in the next two or three years, though. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, next we have a little update about the Conifer High School library, and as you know, we fought really hard to keep that library, so we have to use it. So I'd like to introduce Brian Maskey, who is the Conifer High School library supervisor. He's just going to give a little update on some things happening at the library. Brian?
I am supervisor of the library. It is located in the high school area. In fact, I still get people all day long, and I didn't know you were here. So that is where we are located. Didn't want to start out, first of all, if you know someone who's involved in summer reading, excellent job this year. We hit our record in JCPL, and sort of good job if you know a little one or even one of the adults that signed up for summer reading. That was great. We have a couple of new things at the library. We have something called a Monkey Day collection, so if you're familiar with placing holes on movies and popular books and things like that, sometimes you get stuck at number five-hundred in the late months for it. This Monkey Day collection is a special collection. No one can hold it, no one can review it, but if it shows up on our shelf with a special sticker on it, go ahead and check it out, so it's kind of one of the jump ahead of everyone else. Storytime, my storytime is scheduled four o'clock on Tuesdays. The baby time has changed, so baby time is for infant to two-year-old. It has changed from Sunday to now it's on Saturday at eleven o'clock, so hopefully there are more parents that can bring their kids in for that. One of the things I'd like to see as a supervisor are comment cards. So I ask if you come into the library, if you like something that we do, please let us know. If you had a bad experience, I'm sorry, that's unfortunate, please let me know so I can do something about it. One of the more popular comments that I hear regularly is about our parking issue. And since we share the school parking lots, it gets a little rough sometimes if people can't find places to park. So I'm just asking for your help to spread the word that the first twenty parking spaces off of the roundabout are actually made for by the public library, and those are supposed to be for the public library. If you come to an event at the school, please try and remember and spread the word that there are other parking lots and things to park at as well. Or if you do end up parking there, come on into the library, so you can check things out. Couple, last couple of things here. If you know someone, I do a lot of crafts during storytime, so if you have some crafts hanging around, some glue, crayons, markers, felt, popsicle sticks, things like that, and you don't need them anymore, I'd be more than happy to take those off your hands. Kids are expecting those crafts, mad like that, and have trouble after each storytime, always doing crafts, I mean, a lot of fun and creating some things. The other thing I'd like to do in the future, probably at the beginning of the next year, is to create a Lego club for kids about five and up. And I know this helps with literacy in a way that helps them tactfully grab things, put them together, create stories in their minds. So a Lego club is something very important as well. If you have kids, grandkids that have grown up with their Legos and you still have those around, I'd love to take those off your hands as well. And the last thing is just remember, we have lots of the latest DVDs, so just like Redbox and Netflix and things like that, come on into the library, check out movies, books, magazines, lots of computer stuff going on, and getting quite good at answering all the questions on e-readers and downloading books for all the little electronic devices. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next we have some exciting news about historic preservation. We've got the Little White Schoolhouse and Meyer Ranch, and then I'll talk, I'll give a little bit of an update about the Yellow Barn. Janet Shown is the president of the Conifer Historical Society and Museum, and she's here to talk about both Meyer Ranch and the Little White Schoolhouse. Janet?
So how many of you here are here in the mountains because you love this land? Yeah! Well, so were the pioneer families. The pioneer families that came to the Conifer area loved this area, and there was a group of us, or a group of people back in about 2006, that started to wonder, what did those pioneer families do? How did they get by in the eighteen-eighties and the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds? How did they live? How did they survive? How did they work? Where did they work? What did they do? And they created the Conifer Historical Society and Museum. And up until now, it's been a traveling museum. We've had a lot of events, and we've had a lot of activities and exhibits, and, but we haven't had a place. And many of you know that a couple of years ago, we started looking to see if we could make a museum out of the Norm Meyer home and land, and that's a project that's still in place. We're still doing a feasibility study on it. But a couple of months ago, something pretty exciting for us happened. Unfortunately, it was not so good for the preschool in this area, for West Jefferson Preschool. The Jefferson County School District decided to close the preschool at the Little White Schoolhouse, which is Conifer Junction School on Barclay Road near the Yellow Barn, and they decided to move it over to West Jefferson Elementary. And when they did that, they very graciously decided to donate that property to the Conifer Historical Society, so that we could fill the last, fulfill the last part of our name, which is and museum. So we now, in this next week, will probably sign the title, the quit-claim deed, and have the Little White Schoolhouse as a museum here in Conifer. And we're really excited about that. That schoolhouse was built in nineteen twenty-three. It had a lot of great teachers, one of them that was very famous, and you did a study of the schools in this area, was Phoebe Grandzilla, and she's quite well-known around here, and her daughter, her granddaughter still live here. And we have a lot of exciting things planned for the Little White Schoolhouse, for the museum itself, but we need your help. We have to know if Conifer can sustain and maintain a museum. We don't have a tax base, as all of you know, and so we're asking you to help us, to donate time, to donate financially, to be on our board if you have talents that you can share with us, and believe me, we could use every kind of talent. And come to our events. We appreciate it, and that's it. And Angela says it's time, but this was only two minutes, thirty seconds.
Thank you, Janet. Then as far as the Yellow Barn goes, we were hoping to have a speaker here tonight, but at least I've got a little bit of an update. There is a group right now that is working on the nomination for the National Register for the entire Barclay Corner. So that includes the Yellow Barn, the daycare center, the two houses, and the Civil War Well. That'll take a little bit of time. It probably won't be completed until at least next April, and until then, there will be no transfer of ownership. The Clarks are hoping to sell at least a portion, but nothing, it sounds like nothing will happen at least till next April. So stay tuned as far as what is going on with the Yellow Barn, another wonderful historical structure that we have in our area. Okay, so next, we have Mountain Area Land Trust. Betsy Hayes is the Development Director for Malt. She's going to be talking about saving the land, leaving a legacy, and just some exciting things that are happening right now. So, Betsy? Thank you, Shirley.
So as Shirley mentioned, I'm Betsy Hayes, and I am the Development Director at Mountain Area Land Trust. We have some exciting news and really appreciate this opportunity to be able to come here tonight. Mountain Area Land Trust, for those of you that don't know, has been working in this community for twenty years, and we have protected forever almost twenty thousand acres of land from golden to fair play. So it's something we all enjoy every day. It's the reason we live here in this community. It's the reason places like this exist. This is Evergreen, this is Beaverbrook Watershed, there are some other areas over there on my display table. Those are all pictures of areas in Conifer. We protected over seven thousand acres just in the Conifer area alone. And when I say protected, what does that mean? What we do is we help to get a conservation easement placed on land that protects it forever. And that conservation easement is something that Mountain Area Land Trust then holds and is responsible for, to make sure that it is managed and executed and followed. And a conservation easement assigns to malt, as it is sometimes called, the responsibility for making sure that that land is conserved. So a landowner, a private landowner can have a conservation easement on their property in many, many acres if you go down Pleasant Park Road, down two eighty-five, down seventy-three, I mean, all over. These areas are protected forever. The land can be bought and sold, but there will not be a Highlands Ranch development on that land. So that's what we do. It's really great, it's something that we all can appreciate. And what's exciting is two things. We have private projects, like I mentioned, some of these lands you can't step on, but they are your viewscape, they are for, you see by Shirley over there, you see the elk, I mean, we provide the wildlife corridors for animals to be moving throughout our community. Those are private spaces. But then we also partner with other organizations to work on public projects, such as this one that I showed you, which is Beaverbrook Watershed. We have been working with Janet Shown, where'd she go?
I'm over here.
Okay, there she is. So we've been working with Janet and her team on the Meyer Ranch project. We've been talking with the folks on the Trails project, because what we do is we help to make sure that the conservation of the land is protected and that the interest of the public is represented. So that's what we do. We have tonight, afterwards, if you have questions or anything, you want to come and talk to us, Kirk Valentine is here, he's one of our land specialists, many of you know him, he's there, and Rod Morgan, he's on our board, both Conifer residents, both heavily involved in malt, and you know, please ask us any questions. Someone has asked in the past, what about like down where the fire was? We did have some conservation easement land that burned. It all burned, a whole bunch of it, but that's okay, because what we do is protect the land forever. And so nature is coming back. If you drive down through the valley now, you'll see, you know, it's very sad, you see the trees that are burnt, but then the Aspens are coming back, and they're this high already. I mean, nature is coming back, and Mountain Area Land Trust is a very, very reputable organization, and then, so that leads me to our big, big news on this little small piece of paper, so you can hardly see that. But what happens is, I have copies of this article from the Mountain Connection, if you didn't see it, from the September first issue, over here. Just about ten days ago, Mountain Area Land Trust was awarded national accreditation by the Land Trust Alliance Commission. Now you might think, oh, well, great, congratulations, but what does that mean? What that means is, we went through a rigorous three-year process to be examined very, very closely, our financial records, our management records, our stewardship records, to make sure that we are the cream of the crop, the top of all land trusts in the United States. We got this award. What that means is that we are one of the top ten percent land trusts in the entire United States, based right here in this community. So it's really, really a great thing for all of us, because like we are only supported by personal donations, business sponsorships, and grants. People giving money to our organization or entrusting the responsibility of their land to our organization, they do know that we are a viable and very well-run group, and we are going to be here forever, because these things are protected forever. So feel free to take a copy of the article if you haven't read it, and please come ask us some questions, and I just want to end with one quick video.
In terms of land conservation, twenty years, we were just waiting forever for it, so please enjoy. here and ask questions and everything in just a little bit here. Next, we have Stan Fox, who is the president of the Conifer Chamber of Commerce, and he's just going to talk for a minute about updates for the chamber and businesses.
One minute, right? Oh, one minute, thanks a lot. When Shirley said there was no campaigning, I thought I'd have to wipe my jaw shut. Okay. Town hall meeting talking points. Prepared for me by Dawn Smith, who was our very energetic, very active executive director. First, thank you for shopping locally. And speaking of that, we have a new tool that will allow people to shop and recreate locally. It's the Two Eighty-Five Tourism Footprint Adventures Map, and it's on the table, and Melissa's holding it up in the air as we speak. Okay, thank you for shopping locally again, and the following announcements, you may notice that there's an intercurrent, a certain theme that goes through this. The third annual Octo Beer Fest is coming up next Thursday from four to seven PM, Booksplace. This is a fundraiser for our Conifer Chamber Scholarship Fund, so we really would love to see you there. Steve Brooks, who owns Booksplace, has arranged many, many boutique beer, beers for us to taste, and it will be an excellent event, as it usually is. Following that, it will be the twelfth annual wine tasting and silent auction, and we have added a new wrinkle to that, and it's chocolate. It's going to be, we've added what we call decadent desserts and wine, and that will be Saturday, November tenth, from five to nine at the Red Barn in Marshdale, and so ends all the alcohol announcements. The thirtieth annual Conifer Christmas Parade. This is a signature event for those of you who have never been there and join the over three thousand people that normally congregate for the auction parade. This is quite an event, and will be Saturday, December first, and we have a new time that will be starting one thirty PM, and we are looking for entries. Last year, we had what, less than fifty entries for, in the parade?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, and we're looking to increase that. The theme this year is a musical Christmas, and you could choose to model your entry after a Christmas carol or a holiday song. For example, you can decorate like "Hark! The Herald, Angels Sing," or on the other side of the spectrum, "Grandma Got Run Over by a Ranger." So take your choice. We're also adding a few new things for the Conifer Christmas. It's going to, we're going to have the first annual sledding competition at Meyer Ranch. Jefferson County Open Space has graciously allowed us to use that property, the property at Meyer Ranch across, in Meyer Ranch Park, for a sledding competition. It's going to be very exciting. We're also going to have Christmas markets at two shopping centers on that day, and a Santa's milk and cookie eating competition. So gird yourself for those exciting events. And there are things for you to look at, right? And I also want to urge you, one last thing before Angela holds a curtain sign, and that is come see Lucky Stiff at Stagecoach Theater. Very fun play, runs the next two weekends. Thank you very much, Shirley.
Thank you, Stan. And now we have an update about developments that are happening in the Conifer area, and Peter Barclay, Conifer Area Council Board Member, puts those together every month, and they are on our website, so you need to keep up with those.
Thank you, Shirley. Yeah, in our ever-ongoing effort to improve how we get information to you that you want to get, we made a change in the handout on the updates. Instead of the six pages of old information, it's now been simplified to only those things that are active and updated, new applications and updates. Couple of things I would point out, on the new applications, there's some overruns, because we had such a long gap since the last meeting. We had the Aspen Park Metropolitan District, which was a site approval. Once it goes through the Planning Commission, it's done with the county, and now it's up to the state to approve that. The Schaefer Shop site renewal, that too is a site approval, and that will be, is done and will be going through. There's a new application for mental offices at the Conifer Center, the Safeway Center. The other ones that I'd point out, there's the Conifer Heights, which is the property across Two Eighty-Five and the Safeway. That did get approved, their rezoning application was approved, and since I'm on the Trails team, the good news with that is required rezoning that they received, is that they, when they go to Platte, they have to dedicate easements for Trails. And then the Critical Mass Roller, the special use application for the slashing facility on Pleasant Park Road was denied. Other than that, there are just a couple of residential applications that are small subdivisions, nothing big in that realm. And you might just keep your eyes open, we're going to try to work out a way to put a map with this, it's going to take a little bit of effort, but that'll be the next change coming your way. If you do want to go look at all those older applications to see what they are, there are plenty out there, they're just, they're stagnating because of the economy. You could go to our website, you know, it'll be a much more complete listing. So that's all I have to report. Angelo was worried about what to do with time overrun on the video, and I said, well, I can put my spot, but I don't think she really would have. Hey, ready? That's it.
Thank you, Peter. And now Pat Bichard, who is also a Conifer Area Council Board Member, is going to give you an update on all that is happening with the Conifer Trails, and there is quite a bit going on. So, Pat?
Thank you. Number one, if you've been here before, you know Shirley never gives you much time to speak, so I've not been updating on everything that's going on with the trail. We have been pretty busy. And one thing that I'd like to, bring up tonight is what we think is really, the latest piece, really exciting news. Barren more delays from the dowling. You should start seeing construction on our second phase of the trails, starting October As you know, we have a whole trail system laid out, we've only got one trail actually on the ground, like I said, that Sutton Road. Sutton Road ends at Davis Road up by King Supers. It's that way, sure, there you go. And, look under my goggles. It's on with the slides. So there's a sidewalk that goes down Davis Road right now. So the new piece of trail that we're getting ready to put in will provide a crosswalk across Conifer Road. across Conifer Road, and then the sidewalk that goes down Conifer Road goes over what's now a lot of irrigation drainage, goes under the underpass, and it comes out on Meyer Parkway. So that will be a paved sidewalk all the way into Meyer Parkway. That really accomplishes a number of things for us. Number one, it gives us an avenue to get from one side of the highway to the other side of the highway safely, which does not exist today. Number two, you'll now be able to go all the way across and enter Meyer Park Open Space from, from the road to Meyer Parkway. I don't know if any of you have even hiked or noticed it, but if you, once you get onto Meyer Parkway there, if you go up Meyer Parkway about a hundred, a hundred and fifty yards, on your left-hand side, your side, it says Neighborhood Access to Meyer Open Space. There's a really beautiful trail that goes right across and connects in with all the rest of the trail system on the open space. Hey, you finally got it. So that's Davis Road where it comes down, and so we've got a whole presentation, there's certainly not enough time to go through all of it. But in effect, now you could actually leave your car over to King Supers parking lot, hike all the way across and go across some trail rather than having to start down there at the parking lot with the rest of the flagmen. So. But the other thing it accomplishes is, if you've looked at our trail system at all, you notice one of the things that we have is a loop around Conifer. And this actually will complete that loop, in fact, that it gives us a crosswalk over to the other side of 285. And if you look at our entire trail system, it does utilize the lesser used roads as part of that trail system to get around them. So you'd have to continue up Meyer Parkway and then connect through. Sounds a little complicated, but if you'll stop back at our table at the, during the open session, we can show you a map of how it all fits together. So that kind of gives you an update on that. That starts October first, it's supposed to take one month to maybe six weeks, so hopefully we'll have it there before long. The other quick thing I want to do is tell you, one of the things that we're working on right now, we're working on trying to get the link from the high school, which would start down by the rock, right there off of seventy-three, go up through the high school and near the football field around, and connect to the Journey Church property. The Journey Church property already has trails on their property. We want to connect to their trail, which will eventually then bring us down to Fly Jam Ranch. And that really isn't too far away. We've got just really one little section to build, we've got, we're working closely with the school and Journey Church, so I really think that's going to be something that'll happen in the near future. We have our next meeting next Wednesday, Tuesday night, September twenty-fifth, six o'clock at the library. All are invited. And we certainly like all your input, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Pat. And I think these pictures are actually going to be part of a presentation that we might be able to show at our November meeting. So stay tuned, and I think that we'll have, we'll try to show that at the next meeting. Okay. Well, next, Sherri Jarrow, and she's going to introduce another speaker. She's our State Representative, who has been instrumental in fighting really hard for us up here. I know there's a lot of issues together with that regarding the Lower North Fork Fire. And Sherri is going to talk about that and introduce somebody else that will also.
Thank you, Shirley. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all. Those of you that attended the public hearings for the Lower North Fork Fire probably have a better idea of what's going on with the, with the issues we're facing legislatively. You remember there were two bills that we passed last year. One was a bill that was to give the residents of Conifer a victim's voice, in other words, we were supposed to be able to have an impact on legislation that would be passed to hopefully prevent or improve the circumstances should another controlled burn get out of hand the way it did in the Lower North Fork. We have been going through that process with the commission for the last couple of months. I have been one of the members of that commission. It has been, I am sorry to say, a very frustrating process, but I have to tell you that I am so proud and pleased to, to tell you that we have members of our community that not only were the victims, but are truly our heroes. And with that, I'd like to introduce Sherri Scanlon to give you an update on what's going on with the Lower North Fork Fire.
Well, actually, the real hero is Sherri Jarrow. Our group has been absolutely in great admiration of her. She has been our advocate, and we need an advocate, I'll tell you. One of the things that I hear all the time from people down the hill, up in Evergreen, here in Conifer, is, "Well, you guys are doing fine, right? The state's taking care of you." Well, what I want you to know is that is not happening in spite of the efforts of Sherri Jarrow. We are fighting tooth and nail to get any help whatsoever. Yes, we have insurance money that will pay for our structures and our clothing and our possessions, but our land is destroyed. And yes, the mansion was made of aspen trees that are growing, and they are indeed coming in. I have thirty-five acres, and I have approximately six live trees, not counting the baby aspen trees. So I'm going to show you what I was wearing about two hours ago when I get ready to walk off. The trees are black, and we are, we are responsible for cutting them down ourselves unless we hire somebody else to do it. The state is not helping us at all. I don't know if you were aware, but on the, on day one of the prescribed burn, the Colorado State Forest Service actually had inmates. I don't recall how many number, but they had inmates down on the controlled burn. We have asked, why can't we get inmates to come help us restore our land? So as I said, we're sort of beating our heads against the wall, but we aren't going to give up. We, we are confident that what the Governor, the Attorney General, what they would like for us to do is to tire out and go away. And we, we are ready and willing to do that. Yeah, sometimes we are, but we're really not at that point yet. So I'm hoping that perhaps we can get some help from you all. My husband, Tom, put together, with a number of our community members, put together a PowerPoint presentation, which he gave to Sherri and the rest of the commissioners, and it was open to the public. I don't know if anybody here saw it. It's really, really interesting information, because this is not information that came out in the Bill Bass Report, that was the Governor's investigative report. There is absolutely damning information, and we would like for you all to see it. It is going to be shown again. We have not picked the date yet, but Sherri Chragi of the Mountain Resource, who by the way has helped us up throughout this whole process, Sherri has, please go over there. Sherri has a little notebook, and if you are interested in being put on an email list or a call list to be notified of when we do this presentation again, please sign up. I don't know which term, are you going to put that?
I think I'll just pass it around, Pat.
That would be great. She's just going to pass it around. Let me just tell you really quickly that the Waldo Canyon people, I just talked to somebody today who was at a meeting there on Monday, you know, they got FEMA support, but we did not. And they have been given a non-qualifying loan for up to $200,000 for their structure, $40,000 for their contents, and a 1.9% thirty-year fixed loan to rebuild their homes. We'd love to get something like that. You know, one other comment I just want to make? The comment was, the conserva, there was some conservation easement land that burned. It was actually not mine, but my immediate next-door neighbor's. And I guarantee there will not be a Highlands Ranch built up there. There will likely not be anything built up there, because no one's going to want to live with all of these black sticks. So again, we could use your help. If you don't mind signing up, and I will contact you when the PowerPoint presentation is, we'd love to get some, some pressure from people other than us, on the people who can actually make the difference in our lives. So that being said, I'm just going to show you what I was wearing a couple of hours ago. And this is how, this is how you leave when you are, after you've worked on the land for even just a few minutes.
I almost came west in this, and I thought perhaps it'd be better if I took a shower, but.
Oh, Sharon, that's clean. You should see it.
So this was just a couple hours ago, and I had black all over my face.
And what were you doing?
Oh, I was limbing. I was limbing trees with a chainsaw, and then I was hauling slash. And it's filthy, you inhale it, and this is our job.
And it should be the Forest Service's job.
Thank you very much.
And if we could show Sherri and Andy and Jeanne and Sherri's, well, thank you for everything you did. And keep in mind that what we're doing is not for necessarily these individuals, because they've said from the get-go that what they want to do is make it better for the next group. We're actually trying to protect all of us.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate your involvement, and we appreciate your support, and we appreciate the fact that you're listening. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Sherri and Sherry. Just an awful devastating thing happened to us, and I know that a lot, a lot of issues, a lot of questions have come up about insurance. And, you know, what should we really be insuring for, and what rights do we have through our insurance? So tonight, we have two different speakers that are going to be there here. First is Commissioner Jim Reisberg. I hope I said that right? Reisberg, thank you. He's with the Division of Insurance for the Colorado Department of Regulatory Agencies. And then we also have Jennifer with Creekside Insurance, going to be talking about some issues. So first of all, Jim.
Thank you for the invitation to share with you tonight. I was asked to talk a little bit about the Division of Insurance and what role we might have or not have in some of what you have been facing. The Division of Insurance is one of the ten divisions in the Department of Regulatory Agencies. The Executive Director is Barbara Kelly, and the mission of the DORA is consumer protection. Also with me tonight is Stacy Coleman. We could have a table over here with some brochures, and also the ability to answer individual questions, if you have those. And Stacy and Bobby Baca, Peg Brown and myself, we're down at the disaster recovery site. I think Bobby was also here at your last meeting, so we have been trying to monitor the things that you're going through here. Division of Insurance in Colorado, we license over 120,000 insurance agents, and so we have to monitor their activities. We also have about 1,440 companies in Colorado, and we have to regulate their work. We receive about 2,000 calls a month in our consumer advocacy area, about 24,000 calls a year, and many of those are for information, our education. They just have questions. They were looking at a policy, they had a question about insurance, they weren't sure where to get the answer. They can call in, and we'll share that with them. They've called a company, and they say, "I've called my company four times, I just have a simple question, I haven't been able to get through to anybody, I've been put on hold a number of times, can you help me?" And we can do that. Of those 24,000 calls every month, or every year, about 4,500 of those turn into an official complaint. And when a consumer then issues a complaint against a company, then that allows us to become your advocate, to step in and begin to work with the company and see what we can do to get that resolved. And basically, it's, it's our role then to help them honor the contract that you have with them, so you get what you have coming to you. But we can't do that without your permission. We can't call a company and start delving into your files until you've given us permission to do that. And once you do that, then we'll follow that complaint through. Sometimes we get a very good response, and sometimes we find out that they have honored their contract, and there isn't any more that we can provide. But it's, it's very important that you help us, because you're our ears and our eyes on what's going on in this area. And as people call in, then we begin to see it, there's patterns that are developing, and maybe we need to look at a company more closely than we would have otherwise, where we might only be looking at them once every five years. If we have a pattern, then we can look at them more closely. We can work with those companies. Waldo Canyon, we've had one company in, and we said, "We're hearing a lot of issues that you have in the way you're handling these claims." And you need to know about that, because we expect you to do something better. But it's also important that we share that consumer protection begins with you. When you, when you first have that contact with an agent and you begin to buy a policy, consumer protection begins with that agent, to fully explain to you exactly, to listen to you, to find out what you need, and then to fully explain what it is that they, they think you should purchase. The policy sets limits on what a company will have to reimburse you for what you have lost, but you are responsible for knowing what you've lost, because no one but you knows what you've lost. And we hear a lot of concern, particularly these total fires, that were victimized twice by having to list all of our personal possessions and make this list and compensate it for us. If the company doesn't know what you have, they're not obligated to, to, you know, reimburse you for that and to help you replace it. It's also important that you understand what type of policy that you're purchasing. There are three kinds of policies in most homeowners, an actual cash value, a replacement cost, and an extended cost. And they, they have different amounts of protection. So it's important that when you go in to look at a policy, and you may hear this again from your next speaker, you don't base it on price alone. The best price is not always the best policy. You don't base it on what the market value of your property is. You don't base it on what the mortgage value of your property is. But when you purchase insurance, you should base it on what it's going to cost for you to rebuild that structure. In my own personal home, for example, replacement cost value is $60,000 more than the, the market value today. But I need to buy that, because that's what it would cost if I wanted to rebuild that home. And then in the mountains, you have to also realize that the rebuilding costs are sometimes going to be higher than what some of the companies would have projected if it's in a normal subdivision. You might have slope issues. There are a lot of other issues that you have to look at and face. You also might want to look at extended coverage, that you buy the basic policy, and that policy will give you a percentage of what you have on your home toward your personal possessions. But you may have some other things that you want to insure especially. You might have jewelry, watches, and furs, and you can buy an extension to that policy. You might have antiques, and you might want to then increase that coverage. You might have fine arts, increase that coverage. A lot of camera equipment, a lot of electronics. And if you have those, then you don't want to stop with just a basic policy, but you want to value those and make sure that you cover those, and once they're valued, it's a whole lot easier. Obviously, one of the problems is, it is a whole lot quicker and more efficient to make your contents list while you can still see everything instead of after it's lost. For many of you, it's too late for that now, but we really encourage everyone, start making your lists of what you have. Open your covers and take pictures, do a video, and start keeping track of the types of things that you have. Do the inside of your house and the outside of your house, so people can see what the condition is. And then every year, visit with your agent and see the changes we need to make. What are the rebuilding costs now? What are construction costs? Is there anything else we need to know so that we make sure that we're properly insured? But the key is, you can use the Division to be your advocate. We have excellent people in our consumer protection area. They know how to work with the companies. The companies do respond to us. Sometimes we can get through much quicker than you can when we know exactly what we're looking for. The companies are licensed in the state, and they know that we review those licenses, and we make sure that they're doing the job for the consumers. But we can't go to work for you until you give us a chance. In the Division of Insurance, we have about eighty-seven people doing the work in the In the Division of Insurance, we have about 87 people doing the work in the division. And consumer really is king. And while we have regulatory authority over the companies, we meet with the companies on a regular basis, we also want to get out and meet with the people of the state of Colorado. If you're an organization where you have meetings or you have a membership, please give us an opportunity to come in and share and answer questions that you may have. We, we like to come to functions like this so we can answer questions one-on-one, but we can also work on a group. Or you can go to askdora.colorado.gov, and we have a tremendous amount of information on our website, not just about wildfires, but about health insurance and auto insurance, title insurance, and a host of other things that you may want some help on. So use our website, use our phone number, let us work for you. And if you do, we'll do the very best that we can to help you through your insurance problems, your homeownership problems, and your, keep you well-educated on what you need to do to protect yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And hopefully we'll have Jim and others up here often. We actually, Conifer Area Council actually has a relationship with DORA. As John Muddell, who is on the Conifer Area Council Board of Directors, he also sits on the Consumer Insurance Council. Is that right, John?
That's right.
And so we hope to have DORA involved with a lot of meetings and a lot of things that we do. So next, I'm going to ask Jennifer with Creekside Insurance to talk a little bit about other issues that Jim did not bring up. She says, "What? He already has talked about everything I was going to talk about." But I think she can talk about a lot of other things, too. Jennifer is up here at Creekside Insurance and has a lot of information for you. Jennifer?
Thank you very much, you guys. I appreciate the opportunity. Actually, I'm just going to dovetail off with some of what Jim, Jim talked about. So again, just thank you very much for the opportunity. I know insurance is one of those things we, it's not a lot of fun to talk about, I, I got to tell you. I, I get it. But we all quietly kind of pay for it, and, you know, we saw a few months ago how devastating it can be. But as the months go by and we get further from that fire, it's kind of easy to get complacent. You've got enough stuff going on in your busy lives that talking about insurance with your agent is probably at the bottom of the list. But I hope by the end of my presentation, it gets to the top of your list. So what I'm going to do is just kind of go over four things that you should talk to your insurance agent about. So I really want you to pull out your pen and paper, unless you have a photographic memory, which I certainly do not, but pull out your pen and paper, and I want you to pinky swear me from far away that you are going to call your agent tomorrow, and if not tomorrow, that you'll call within the next few days. Don't let a week go by because guess what you're going to do?
Forget.
You're going to forget because it's easy to do. So as Jim talked about, the number one thing that you want to make sure when you call your agent is, "Do I have my home insured for the right amount?" And what is the right amount? Jim talked about it. There's actual cash value, there's replacement cost. Who in this room would want to replace their house brick for brick? Who wants to get their house back? Most of us want to get their house back. And it's hard to figure that out, though, how much, you know, what it costs. I don't want to get a builder out here and waste their time. Well, guess what? Your agent has a wonderful resource that they can help you figure that out. They have a building cost guide that the insurance companies use, and they can, within a few minutes, ask you all kinds of information about your house, plug it in, and voila, all comes a replacement cost figure so that you can feel comfortable that you've got the right amount of coverage. So should you lose your home, you're going to get that same home back. You're not going to have to build a smaller home. You'll get it fully back. Okay? So that's the number one thing you're going to want to do. Number two, what are my rebuilding or home settlement options after a fire or a major loss? Our earlier speaker, unfortunately, who lost her home, who wants to live in the same spot where now they have charred trees? And the beautiful scenery they once had is gone. So talk to your agent about, "Do you have to rebuild?" Most insurance policies will require that you either rebuild on your site, or they'll let you take that same amount of money, but you have to rebuild someplace else. So guess what you have to do? You got to go out and buy a lot. You got to get the okay from your mortgage company. There are some insurance policies out there, though, that will let you take out a cash-out option. You take the money and you walk. You can buy a house someplace else, you can go on a, you know, trip around the world, or you can, you know, build someplace else. There is flexibility, you just got to make sure what does your policy say? Okay? Number three, do I have personal property replacement coverage? You don't want the claims that just sort of walk through the house and say, "Hey, that TV's 10 years old, I'm giving you $100 for it," when it's going to cost you $500 to rebuild or to replace it. So make sure, first of all, that you have contents replacement because that's a huge one. Most insurance policies have that built in, but some, some don't. So make sure you have that. And last but not least, and this is a huge one, because the homeowner's policy is put together for the average homeowner. Okay? Average homeowner has maybe a few thousand dollars worth of jewelry. They may not have an extensive fine arts collection. They may not have a lot of guns or computers. So what you want to do is call your agent and say, "Hey, these are the things that I have in jewelry." If you thought $30,000 in jewelry, guess what? Unless you added it to your policy, most likely it's not covered. Okay? Because most policies have about a $5,000 maximum. So make sure you ask your, your insurance advisor or agent about that as well. And I can truly tell you, guys, so I want you to make sure you write all four of these things down. What I can tell you is I know most of the agents up in this area, and they are truly passionate about what they do. They truly care about getting with you ahead of time to make sure you have the right policy in place, and then they will be there for you. They care deeply about this community. So if you don't have an insurance agent, get one. If you don't have an insurance agent up here, get one locally. Because they're going to care about far more than anybody on the other end of the phone in another state or down in Denver. So I can't stress that enough. And then the only other thing that I wanted to make sure to cover with you guys tonight was, and Jim alluded to it, make sure you know what you have. You know, as, as we're in our house for a long period of time, we tend to forget, you know, what we've got in closets and in cupboards. So I've got some great gift with me after today's, or tonight's program because I've got a free inventory service. It's not something I do. It's out there on the web, and it is completely free, that you can go online and create your own home inventory. It can be as detailed or as general or as basic as you want it to be, but you can do it online. And I also have some great inventory forms that you can take home. It's completely free to you, no obligation whatsoever to do business. I just want you to have this information, so it's, it's good for you to use. And then videotape your stuff. I can't stress it enough. And it's good to do that probably one or two, every one or two years, just to keep things up to date, and make sure you get a review with your agent every two years. It'd be great to do it yearly, but that gets hard sometimes. So make sure you're getting with your agent every two years. So I think that's all I have for you, and I want to thank you. And last but not least, we have the Mountain Bowl football game, so I'm going to take the last 30 seconds, I think I have.
No, you've got five more minutes.
Oh, I won't talk to you for five. But I do want to advertise that the Conifer Lobos and the Evergreen Cougars, which of course, as you all know, are competing high school football teams, are playing at Conifer Lobos Field at noon on Saturday. So if you want to have some fun, come on out, watch a nice friendly rivalry game, although the players will tell you it's not all that friendly. Come on out, it's going to be a great day, beautiful weather, and it gets a great, great groove, so, and I hate to say it, but go Lobos because we know the Conifer. So anyway, that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Jennifer. Well, great information tonight. There's still a lot of great information all around at all the tables. We've got MOL, we've got the insurance, DORA, the library. We still have a lot of information. There's a lot of information about trails. The sheriff, sheriffs are here, so they have information for you. So please take advantage of that. Our next town hall meeting is November 14th. We'd love to have you all here, and hopefully a lot more, so bring your friends and neighbors. And again, I would like to thank Community Banks of Colorado for your community support of tonight's town hall meeting. Thank you very much for coming tonight.